Okay, very well. Thank you all for coming for tonight. Wareham Zoning Board Appeal Meeting. For our regular meeting on February 14, 2024. It is 6:35 PM and we are at the Multi Service Center, Wareham, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order on my far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica Devenese, Mr. Jim Akabachi, our clerk. We have on Zoom, Mr. Troy Larson, I mean, Mr. Richard Sample, and myself, the Chair, Nazir Al Qalasi, also present. Present, our Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, and maybe Mr. Buckland online, I'm not sure.
He is online? Okay, thank you.
He is?
Yep.
Okay, our town plan is online. I'll do some quick meeting for the minutes for January 24.
Okay, so during my quick review of the minutes, I read two things that I've hand-edited and I want the board to agree that my hand edits are appropriate. The first one being regarding conversation on Joshua, doing 4523 Deolam, 2613 Cranberry Highway. In the text here, there's a comment in the notes that said, "Mr. Perry said he gave the board a covenant that the second apartment would be used while the shop exists." And I think that it was supposed to say would not be used. So I've put the word "not" and initialed it. If that's not what was intended to be there, we can... But I'm pretty sure that's the way it is, so my initials. And then I also noticed regarding the discussion of possible vote, rules and regulations, which we did vote on. Mr. Sample's online, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but it said that Mr. Sample asked why the green cards would need to be improved by the board members. And I'm sure he meant approved. So I've changed that and initialed it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And therefore, I make a motion to approve with those two edits as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Akabachi. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Okay, that's done.
Doobie.
And we have 56-21 TB Delivery, Mass. I'll see DBA Doobie. A request for minor modification for a special permit for Four Recovery Road.
So this, there's been a couple of emails regarding this and it appears that this is just a matter of some bookkeeping or some record-keeping. If you read the quick letter from, on the Doobie letterhead, and there's an email here, as I interpret it quickly, it appears that, you know, we approved them for delivery. They are acting as a delivery. The way the state sets up their permits and licenses, delivery and marijuana couriers fall under the same license and the same page and same... And so they want to make sure their license is correct. They're not planning on becoming couriers. There'll be no courier work from the site. They're going to continue to operate as they have been.
Is there anyone here from Doobie? Want to come forward, please? Please have a seat, state your name and address for the record.
Erica Kennedy, 14 Bittersweet Lane, East Wareham.
Okay.
Justin Kennedy, 14 Bittersweet Lane, East Wareham.
What's the deal with that? So what's the difference between courier and delivery? Do you understand?
Absolutely. So right now, we're operating as a marijuana delivery operator, where we warehouse the product at our facility and we deliver it directly to recreational customers, 21 years of age and older. What we're looking to do is to add a second delivery license, which is the marijuana courier. With that marijuana courier license, we wouldn't warehouse any product at our facility. We would partner with a dispensary and all of the deliveries would originate and be manifested from the dispensary and we would go to the dispensary, pick up the orders and deliver them to the customers.
Glad you came up. I interpreted what I read.
That's okay, that's okay.
Say it again.
Absolutely. The marijuana courier part or what we're currently operating under?
Not everything. So you deliver marijuana now? What's the courier?
Absolutely. So we're currently a marijuana delivery operator and with that, we warehouse product at Four Recovery Road and we deliver that product directly to consumers. Nobody's able to come on-site to make a purchase. The marijuana courier is also another portion of the state's delivery licensee category, but with that, you partner with a dispensary and you, the dispensary manifests and originates the customer orders and you, we, if approved, local, on the local and state level, would partner with the dispensary and our delivery cars would go to the dispensaries, pick up the orders.
Like Uber Eats kind of?
Exactly. It's very much so more like an Uber Eats or a Grubhub model.
All right, I understand. Originally, when your attorney came here, did the permit, I recall, isn't that permit supposed to be combined with agriculture?
No, no, that's a separate. If we were going to do that, we were looking to potentially do cultivation also in town at a different site, but this site is strictly.
I understand, but I recall when you guys came, you applied for agriculture and this.
It was cultivation, manufacturing and the delivery operator, but they were at two different sites.
Right, but isn't the state requires that you have to have agriculture and delivery together? You can't just have the delivery without it?
Oh, no.
You sure?
Yep, yep. They're completely separate license categories.
I understand, separate, but I thought they have to be combined.
Not for them.
And whatever happened to that, to the agriculture when you...
Hopefully down the line, but right now, we're focused on the delivery operations and making sure that that's sustainable and lasting for us and then hopefully being able to reinvest into that portion of it. But for right now, it's just the delivery.
Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any issues.
You think it's a minor?
Yeah, I think it's minor.
Veronica?
I'm not sure that it's minor. I have some questions. If you are considered a courier, what will that do to the number of vehicles you have that you're storing? I imagine they're going to be at Four Recovery Road. Everything would be based there.
Absolutely. So we've actually gone down the number of delivery vehicles for the marijuana operator so that we don't run into that. Additionally, we also leave some parking spaces from One Recovery Road so that we don't run into any parking issues on-site. And with the marijuana courier, under 935 CMR 500 145, Section 6A, for the delivery vehicles for a marijuana courier, they don't technically have to be parked overnight in the town. They can be parked in any municipality where recreational cannabis is allowed.
Okay, all right. And the operating hours for the deliveries would be the same as what they currently are?
Yeah, yep, and with our partner dispensary. So, I mean, they could end earlier. We just don't know yet. We haven't gotten to that part of wanting to lock down a partner quite yet.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm good, that's it.
Have you selected a partner?
We have not. We're in talks with a few different groups, but we want to make sure that we have our local and state approvals in place before we enter into any partnership agreements.
Rich, what do you think?
Um, nothing to, I don't know. I'm just a little confused. So we granted them, did we grant them the right to cultivate? Or is that the state that does that?
No, we grant them a license to deliver and the state gives them that license as well, not only us.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Can I ask, actually, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if you're not currently a dispensary where you have marijuana and deliver it, what are you called?
So we have a warehouse where we store the cannabis at Four Recovery Road. Our license category with the state is called a marijuana delivery operator and it's not considered a retail location. We're not open, like I said, open to the public for.
At all.
So people can't?
No, nobody, and it would continue that way, that nobody would be able to come on-site at Four Recovery.
It's only like online or phone calls to?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the difference with the dispensary is people can go there?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to continue personally. I don't know, we'll see with the board. Like to continue this matter to get more educated about it. Everybody know this is a sensitive subject and a lot of liability on town. I personally like to continue to ask a few questions around. I don't know what you guys, I don't know if it's minor or major. This is not a building house, so we, it's very new to us and if these new permits comes in, we don't understand them. So I'd like to get educated about it before I make a decision, but if you want to vote, we could pull, vote with the board, see what you, what it gets you to.
May I, I'm just?
Yeah, you could add.
Okay, if I could just add a little. So a marijuana courier under 935 CMR 500 is not considered a retail, it's not considered cultivation.
I understand that.
Yeah, I just, they're just very separate license categories. And in terms of the modification to the special permit, our special permit, I believe currently lists us is a marijuana delivery establishment and we're not looking to change that at all. We want to remain a delivery establishment. It's just instead of delivering the product from our facility, we just want to partner with a dispensary and deliver it directly from their facility.
And the taxes would come back to the town also?
Wow, I understand that. I still don't know how that will work. We'd like, I'd like to research it. What do you want to say, Jim?
Is it possible that if the delivery service for a dispensary was successful, you'd abandon your own existing operation?
Our current operation, no, that's not our plan. This is, it's been our baby. We got our Economic Empowerment Certification in 2018.
So it's more like, it's more like?
It's an added.
There's a dispensary, you have, people have to go physically to the dispensary or they can call up you and have it delivered to their home. And so now, this, what you're asking for is the ability for them to go to the, call the place that they normally physically have to go to and say, "Have a licensed person bring it to me because I don't feel like coming down," or "I can't," or "I'm unable," or?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Whatever, yeah, whatever their reason being that they want it delivered.
Absolutely, and the courier model.
You'd be the delivery, yeah.
Yep, it does expand who we're able to service and who we're able to deliver to. Under the delivery operator model, we're only delivering to recreational customers, 21 years of age and older. And under the courier model, when you're delivering for a retail dispensary or for a marijuana treatment center or an MTC, as they call them, you are also able to deliver to medical patients who are 21 years of older. So it's just really about expanding access for the consumer.
I personally feel like it probably would be good for your business, obviously, to increase what you're doing and, you know, I'm okay with it. I understand, though, why the chairman might want a little bit of time to just kind of chew it over and get some more facts, but I feel okay with it.
I make a motion to continue.
What do you think?
I agree with Veronica, but I see what you're saying as well.
Jimmy?
I think I'm on board with both Veronica and Troy, but in all respect to you, I think there's no harm in having them come back in a couple of weeks, giving you a chance. I'd rather have your vote comfortable than strained, personally. So I'm not opposed to waiting.
Rich?
No, I would make a motion to continue.
Okay, anyone in the public want to speak in this matter? I hear none. All right, we have motion by Rich to continue.
I'll second that motion.
February 28th. Do you have a second, Jimmy? Seconds, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Sorry, Jim?
Yes, aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you next time on the 28th. You don't have to advertise again. You just come down and we'll see what happens. Hopefully, we get some answers.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. A quick question for you. We brought a sample of the state's new model host community agreement that lifts all of the licenses on one HGA. I just don't know if you guys would like a sec?
Each license in town?
No, no, so.
Here's the rules that you want to?
All right, all right.
When you said I brought a sample, my head snapped.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No sample like that.
We can't do that.
That's funny.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, very well. Go to the continued public hearing, 43.
You want to keep that? Would you bring it, if there's multiples, I want it in the folder, but if not, I just ask you to make, let us make a copy and put it in the folder going forward. I'd rather have you have the chance to look it over.
All right, leave for me.
Keep it.
I'll bring it.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It was submitted, so it should be for the public, you know?
All right.
Okay.
Very well. 43 South Boulevard, continued matter for 51-23 Karen De Michelle. All right, Counselor.
Attorney, excuse me. Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. I'm here for Karen De Michelle. We're in a continued hearing. I don't know if you need to vote to open this.
Is this?
Yeah, I think you need.
This has been closed? This matter's been closed?
If you recall, this was the one that should have come. Yeah.
Oh, this is housekeep, this is more of a, we got to fix something here.
Yeah, so there was the hearing and?
Do you want us to vote to close the other one? We open?
So I think that, I re-watched the hearing. I guess you said it was like null and void? So I guess it's still open? I just?
Yeah, the public hearing's still open.
All right, great.
Public hearing's still open. Okay, very well.
Yeah, so we're here, we're seeking to have some time to be able to put in different plantings and I know we had talked about July being a date, July 20th, that they would have. During that time, my client, while she's there, would be able to put up the curtains, which again, are only up 30% of the time. But by July 20th, it would be, the poles would be gone and the curtains would be gone. So that's how we kind of left it. I think perhaps, I know that there's opposition here that let them speak to the matter and then if I have anything else afterwards, I'm happy to chat.
Yeah, one second. Okay.
For the public record, I'd like to see somebody explain why something that appeared to be closed at a public meeting is now open, in an open meeting, if either you or one of us?
You can, you can.
I can. I think what happened is there was, we're kind of going back and forth on when it was continued and it was just on the agenda for, I believe, the 24th and it should have been on for the 14th. So I saw the agenda, so I came in.
There was a mix-up on, a scheduling mix-up. One person said it's going to be one day and then we held the meeting on another day and crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, we're here tonight.
Correct.
And we make believe that the last meeting didn't happen, even though it happened.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I guess we discussed that before in the public. Anyone who's in favor of this matter? None against? Let me see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
For the record, my name's Attorney Gregory Fleming. I represent Highland Laurie Lawrence at 56 West Central Butter. Thank you. I was, we were here last year in December. At that time, it was continued to today. Obviously, it was, something was heard on the 24th. Obviously, we're back here today as if what happened on the 24th didn't happen, but we're here. To address, obviously, you heard me in December, so I'm not going to reiterate what I stated back then and waste the board's time with that. You've heard me previously. You've seen our submissions that have been filed. Obviously, we have the position that the appeal was not properly filed. We have our reasons for that. There have been given to the board that the town clerk wasn't timely served, but you have our submissions for that and obviously, we would ask you to deny the appeal because it was not timely filed, but knowing how the board acted last time, I'll move on. The issue we have is that the notice of violation was noticed in October, four months ago. Now, we're, the opponent is seeking until July to be able to figure something out or do something different. We see no reason why, if they're going to be seeking a variance to install a different structure, why they can't come before this board prior to July to see if there, anything new will be built. There's no reason for the offending structure that was installed without a variance needs to remain up while it is illegal. Notice of violation was filed by the Building Commissioner. In their opposition, they're not deeming that the structure is not an illegal structure, that they don't need a variance. They're just asking for more time due to a neighborly dispute. And obviously, a dispute between neighbors is not a reason one to grant a variance or we submit not a reason not to enforce a notice of violation when we're four months past, when the notice of violation was filed. And the 60 days which ran in December or fines would be imposed has come and gone. It's been two months since fines were supposed to be imposed in this matter. So we asked the board to obviously uphold the notice of violation and to impose the fines. This is a structure that is illegal. That a variance would be needed to install this type of structure and one was never sought nor granted. And as a result, it needs to come down. If it doesn't come down, fines should be imposed. Obviously, we would believe otherwise, would encourage people to just install a structure, see if a neighbor opposes. If they do, claim that, oh, we're having a dispute. Structure stays up until I can figure something out. That's not what the bylaw says. Bylaw proposes that a variance was needed first before a structure was installed. Obviously, at the last meeting, we heard that Ms. De Michelle would be looking to maybe put other structures up and was questioning whether or not the board would be amenable to those structures. And we submit that before any new structure would be installed, that obviously, if relief is needed, that they have to come to this board first to get that relief before anything would be installed, any structure. To do so would be similar to what happened here, to install a structure and then beg for forgiveness later. And again, that's not what the bylaw intended. That's not what's supposed to happen. There are rules. Obviously, my client, when they built their home, they had to come before this board. They followed the rules before. They didn't build the house and then come and seek the relief that they needed. They came here first, got the relief and then built. And we feel as though to allow Ms. De Michelle to keep the structure up until July is rewarding them for building a structure that they needed relief for and never sought. Nor have they even filed, to our knowledge, filed for a variance. With regards to, you know, the neighborly dispute, I'll state that there is a dispute and there's a case pending in Superior Court because my clients were forced to sue over this structure. That is the heart of that dispute, is this structure. That's why there's a lawsuit going on. They are the, my clients are the plaintiffs. Ms. De Michelle is the defendant in that lawsuit over this structure. Now, there's also been talk that one of my clients was facing criminal charges with regards to Ms. De Michelle's family. That is not true. That has never been true. Peter, Mr. Peter Russell tried to file criminal charges against one of my clients, but the clerk magistrate dismissed those. Nothing was ever filed, nothing was ever processed. No criminal charges were ever filed against my client. With regards to all of that, is there a neighbor dispute? Yes. But this is a zoning matter. A neighbor dispute has nothing to do with whether or not there's a zoning violation. Does it add some color to the story? Sure, but the bylaw doesn't contemplate that if there is a neighbor dispute, there is a workaround in the bylaw. Not mentioned in the bylaw. And we submit at this point that the board deny the appeal of the notice of violation and seek to enforce the fines. Obviously, we would ask that they be imposed now. Obviously, they should have been, we submit, they should have been started in December. Now, in all reality, can a structure come down that quickly? Could have come down tomorrow? Maybe, but safely, probably not. My clients aren't unreasonable people, you know? But to allow them to keep this structure in these tarps up until July, until the end of July essentially, is more than half of the summer when my clients would be enjoying their outside deck area and have these tarps blocking their view of Onset Bay. No one is entitled to a view, but we submit no one's entitled to put up an illegal structure and keep it up. Thank you.
Counselor?
I wanted to submit to the board. I'll give it to my brother too. This is a letter that Ms. De Michelle, she wrote out and I'd like to read it because it is pertinent, not related to the neighborly disputes, but in our opinion, it's hard for me, even as an attorney, to sit here and say that they were forced to file a lawsuit in regards to this structure. These are poles that are up. They have not been up since Thanksgiving and the tarps have not been up since then.
Excuse me, the poles have not been up or the tarps?
The poles have been up, have been up, but the curtains have not been up since Thanksgiving. So these damages that are being claimed is just preposterous to me. But I would like to read this into record. I think it's important to have on file. So this is from Karen's point of view, so I'm going to speak to it. So it's, "Dear Members of the Board of Appeals, I own the property at 43 South Boulevard and my father bought this house 63 years ago. I love Onset and its beauty. I love the quaintness of the town and I have no objection to the houses being so close to each other. Having summered in Onset these 63 years, I am now 71 years old. I and my family have become friends with all of our property, property abutting neighbors. When I'm in my bedroom, I can nearly touch the Ennis's house that is next to me on the left. Every weekend, I have Lou Ferretti over for dinner. He's on my right. Teresa O'Neil, whose house and rental property is behind me on the left, walk through my yard to get to the beach or quickly to South Boulevard without ever having a problem. Charlie Russell, who lived directly behind us prior to the Lawrences purchasing the property, would stand on his steps every day and lean over the fence and discuss either what I was cooking on the grill or what was going on in life. I love every part of this. In 60 years, we never had a problem with our neighbors. In 60 years, we never had a problem with our neighbors. When the Lawrence's moved in, problems began. This is not a neighborly dispute. This is one-sided, very abnormal situation that has tremendously impacted me and my family. And it's important to note, it has impacted other neighbors as well. And you have that in the record already from our supplemental. The constant harassment, threats, and physical attacks have been so out of control, we are forced to protect our privacy, and most importantly, our safety. Since planting bamboo and using an awning did not work, our solution was to put up privacy curtains. I thoroughly understand and agree with the town's dismay at how the curtains initially looked. I do want to make you aware that the pictures which were submitted to you are not what the curtains look like today. I was disappointed in the way that the curtains looked and have had them recut and adjusted three separate times in hopes to have them look like real curtains. Although they are much, much better than the pictures that were submitted to you, our plan was to invest in an entirely different curtain system that quite frankly looks beautiful. As you can imagine, this would be a huge investment, and we would need approval before proceeding. Our property is always meticulously groomed and beautiful. The last thing I would ever do to the property that I am so proud of is destroy that beauty. But since your interpretation of the bylaws are not allowing us to do so, we once, once month again, for, sorry, for my family's safety and well-being, plant trees to protect our privacy. Your decision to allow us to use the curtains until July 20th is fair and equitable, and just to be clear, the curtains have not been up since Thanksgiving and will not be up until May, which is the case every year, I guess she goes around Mother's Day. We never use a property in the winter and early spring, so the curtains have always been used only 30% of the year. Given we do not live in Onset and we still work, scheduling and meeting people this time of year is very difficult. We've also confronted with landscapers and greenhouses not being available at this time of year as well. I know they've spoken to Clive Olson and specifically looking at the Abervites as well as the Taylor, you know, I'm talking about the Taylor trees, the skinny, okay. So those aren't available. And they also have pavers and bricks there, so it's going to have to be excavated for those planters to go in. Back to letter. Although we've repeatedly tried, we're unable to get a definite time commitment for the tree availability and planting projection ahead of us. As you can well imagine, there are many variables involved in the project. We do however believe that by July 20th, we will have the job completed. I sincerely ask you to please do not change the date. Please allow us the opportunity to complete the project without fear of continued harassment, threats, and bodily harm, because we would have no way to protect our privacy. So as far as the harm here versus the poles that are up, and again, we're talking three or four times tops that they're going to be there before the 20th, I really do believe that it is equitable to leave it. As far as some of the arguments that were brought up in regards to the fact that they're harmed by this, we've said it time and time again, there's no rights to view, right? So if you want to have a water view, you live on the water. So I'll just leave it with that and happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm pretty sure Mrs. DeMichelle is a nice person, but I have to agree with your brother that it does not give her a license to violate the bylaw. And I do feel bad for them, but I personally can jeopardize the town financial matter to be appealed over a top and incur expenses for the town over a top, so.
Let me go against that, because the only way it could be appealed is if your decision's arbitrary and capricious. We've vetted this out. They have had their stance to say what they wanted to say, and we're really coming to an equitable solution. We're not saying we're not in violation. We're asking for time to be able to rectify it.
I know, but, yes, one second.
Okay, thank you.
If we are to leave it until, that's my opinion, we see what the board says, until July, that's mean we're granting a temporary variance, basically. That's how I see it.
Not if it's continued with authorization from the board, leaving it open.
I, uh.
I thought that's where we left it.
I have my little bit, I have a little, I mean, I'm not comfortable with it. I will hear, who wants to speak first, Rich or you?
Richard had something to say, let's hear it.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yes, thank you. It's just, I think we're trying to be a fair board, as we usually are, and I don't think we're causing the town any harm. I think that in the court of law, as everybody knows, not everything happens immediately and on the date that you would like it to. Some things take weeks, some things take months, some takes years. So I think what we have is a dispute in a nice little neighborhood, and I think everybody needs to just settle down, let these people just enjoy what's left of their privacy before they have to start tearing their yard apart over an inconvenience of an albatross of a house that was put up behind them, which I think blocks the sun out. So, you know, if we want to get technical about what looks good in Onset and what doesn't look good in Onset, there could be an argument there. But I'm just saying, the way we left it was that we'd keep it open, they'd come back in July. So I, that's the way I left it, and that's the way I stand with it at this moment.
Okay, very well. Jimmy, sorry.
A question that has popped in and out of my mind, these curtains, whether they remain or have to go, if they're remaining, do they go up in the spring and stay up 24/7? Or do they just go up and down as, you know, like going out in the backyard and putting the awning out? So put the curtain up? Or does the curtain go up and stay up?
It goes up only when they're there, so this is a second home for them.
So if they go there for a three-day weekend, it's up for three days, 24 hours a day, when they leave, they put it down when they leave?
Correct.
So if I may, last July, they were up the entire month of July.
Okay, thank you. You have more?
That was just something that I wanted to know, yeah. That's my question.
I have to agree with Mr. Semple. I'm fine with this going to July 20th. Onset is a very small, tight neighborhood, and I think we have to take each case that comes before the board on its merit. So that doesn't mean that we're going to give everybody in the town leeway to put up curtains or violate the zoning. I just think that, again, it's got its own merit that we have to consider, and in considering it, I think that July 20th is a fair date.
Troy?
I agree.
If, I mean, we'll see what the board says with the vote. If it is to pass, I would definitely make a condition that the top would be, I would ask the board to impose a condition that tops would be up only when the DeMichelles are there. Also, the planting has to be done by the end of, like mid-May at the most. I mean, don't wait till July to plant the trees, if that's to pass. But before we pull a vote or close the public hearing, I'll, Counselor, you want to add?
Again, I understand that the board is attempting to do what it deems to be fair, but I would submit that what's fair is, you know, not necessarily what's fair for my clients as well. I will say, as part of our case in Superior Court, is a trespass claim, because when the wind is up, these tarps or curtains, whatever you want to call them, blow over the property line into my client's yard. Obviously, there was talk last time in December we were here, there are electrical lines in the area. This is a very tight, small community, so we have billowing sails, really, that pick up off Onset Bay and create a hazard. They create a problem, and they trespass onto my client's property. What's fair, you know, I feel is what's getting fair for my clients is also, bless you, getting lost in the sauce here, but.
I understand. Is there anyone else on this, on the public one speaking against this matter? All right, I hear none.
Either way, against or for?
For, then nobody answered, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I am starting to think that July 20th might be a very generous date myself. And I also, in listening, I always had it in my head that these curtains were well-secured. I didn't think the wind could blow them across the property line. I figured they were secured at the top, the bottom, and the sides, so that they would be more like a sailcloth that doesn't, you know, flop like a sheet in the wind. And I think that that should become a condition, personally. I don't think they should be flopping like a sheet in the wind if they're going to exist.
All right, someone on Zoom, John Anthony?
Uh, Peter Russell.
Yes, Mr. Russell. State your name and address, please.
Is, are you hearing me? Because my name is Talon DeMichelle, and I'm on Zoom.
We can hear you, but we can't understand you.
Okay. Um, I'm just, I'm just very alarmed right now, because what's being said is inaccurate.
Excuse me, sorry, ma'am. Ma'am, are, do you have multiple Zoom accounts going right now?
Yes, yes.
Please turn one of them off and only speak through one. Not, she turned off, I think she turned off the wrong one.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
She turned off the one that she was talking on.
Yeah, if I may, that's my client's there. So what they're speaking to is some of the things my brother has been saying. Again, how can this be proven to you, right? But as far as them flapping in the wind in regards to this neighborly dispute, it's common sense, looking at the fact that they've created the lawsuit, they've moved forward with this. We're just asking for a little bit more time. You're saying May? Are we going to be thawed by then? Are we going to be able to get an excavator over there?
May, yes, of course. May, of course you're going to.
Hopefully, right? With the snow that's happening right now. So obviously, July is a month that is bustling in Onset. So that's why, I think why Mr. Semple chose July 20th to allow for July 4th as well.
Right, but if you plant trees in July, they're not going to live. You got to plant them the latest May 15. You know what I'm saying?
If the trees are planted, why would the curtains need to remain?
We're talking about like 12-foot trees, right? So they're going to need to take some time.
Depends what's doing, are they doing it with a shovel?
They're not going to grow in three months.
No, exactly.
So the difference between May and July is moot. If they're going to buy 12-foot trees, they're going to have 12-foot trees for a couple years. If they buy 20-foot trees, they'll have 20-foot trees. The first year, they're going to establish roots. So, you know, don't, educate me, but don't think I'm silly. I don't want to use the word stupid.
Anyway, I think we should move, let the board vote what they want with conditions. Let's move to close it, and we'll go from there.
So moved.
I have a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nazi, it's closed. Okay, now the wishes.
So I always have the biggest mouth, but I'm still willing to give these people some relief and some time. I'd like to, I'd like to stiffen up the language that these curtains, if they're, if we're going to allow them to remain for a period of time, they should be very well-secured. They should be neat and tidy. I hate to use generic words like that, but it sends the intent of the decision. And only up, of course, when they're enjoying the backyard, if there's, you know, if they're going to go to the beach and not be home for a few hours, they could take them down. I think we're granting them a courtesy. I think they should be courteous in return, personally. They don't need to be up 24 hours a day. I get it, if you want to go to bed, you don't want somebody looking in your bedroom window, but I also get it, if you're down on the beach, you don't need to protect your view. So, and I, frankly, I think that, I think July 20th is a long time away. I think we could tighten that up. That's me. You guys do, I'll agree with whatever you guys agree to. That's my say.
I, we have to think careful with this matter. If we close this public hearing, we have to render a decision within 45 days. If we, we can't render a decision, say, yeah, we grant you a variance for till July, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not big on that.
So.
I think during the meeting that was, that was.
We continued the public hearing. I believe we continued the public hearing. We said we'll continue it till July, we'll come back and then make a decision. Temporary variance does not work, and I'm not, I know it's 90 days from opening the hearing, from filling, filing the permit for hearing, but I believe it's 45 days after we close, we have to render a decision. Couple of things, we have to make a firm decision now, or we have to re-nag in our closing the public hearing, reopen it and keep it open. I am not willing to give a vote on a temporary variance. I don't think it holds.
I agree. I think we have to reopen it. I feel like there's no reason why we shouldn't stand by what we originally stated for time. And I think that in terms of taking the curtains down, I think it actually might cause more problems for them to have to take it down when they go to the beach, then you got the neighbor watching over, oh, they went to the beach, they didn't take it down, and then the commission is going to get phone calls, whatever.
You said they take it down when they're not home.
When they are not there, right? But so they're, they're not there the entire month. If they're not, if they're gone during the week, because they're at their other residence for the work week, and then they're there on the weekend, I don't think we should set a stipulation to, okay, it's 12 noon, and I'm going down to the beach, now I have to take them down, now I'm back at 3:00, I have to put them up, now I'm going to the store, I have to take them down, and I have to, I think that would create issues with the neighbor watching to see if, whatever. Either if we're going to let them leave it up, I think while they're at the residence, till July 20th, which was the date that we had originally said, it remains as is, we give them the time to rectify and be done with it.
We have to reopen if that's the matter. Resend our vote.
Let's rescind our vote. I like the idea of keeping it open.
You have to.
I like the idea, possibly if we're going to keep it open, of coming back on a regularly scheduled basis between now and July or May or whenever, whatever dates are set. I think it's now February, March, April, May, June, July, we're given, we're five months, five months, I think we need to hear this is going on. I don't think I want to say, see you in five months. I don't think I want to do that. I think I want to see them every, I don't know, 30 or 45 days or something. I just, if, so if they want to come, if, instead of having the commissioner have to get phone calls and write new, you know, and.
Yeah, but coming in 45 days, incurring expense on the neighbors and on the applicant. I mean, lawyer.
Like to know, like to know if they found a solution and what it is and what the suggestions are.
If they find a solution, that send us a letter, we'll have them come in.
Okay.
I think it's only, I mean, they spent enough money back and forth, I think it's only fair. All right, let's rescind our vote to reopen.
I will second Jen's motion to.
Okay, so we have a second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye as well, nazi, aye. Okay, so what's the wishes now?
I'd like to continue for.
Let me ask you something. Now it's open back for discussion. We continue this public hearing, here comes July, and they didn't do nothing. What do we do from there? What do we do then?
Well, the discussion during the meeting that was annulled was that on July 21, $300 a day fine becomes imposed.
And say they don't.
Say they don't what?
And it goes into effect, right?
Say they don't what?
They don't do anything.
Say they don't do anything.
Then the letter goes into effect, and they pay the fine from that date.
Okay, I like paying the fine. So if they don't comply, they have to pay the fine from the date, from the violation date.
I think that's fair.
Because if July comes, say, oh, okay, sorry, we don't want to do it, they tear it down, then.
Oh, you want to go retroactive to October?
Well, that's what the law says, you don't.
Okay, no, I'm.
They've been in violation, so they were supposed to. I mean, we don't want to, I don't want to impose it, but they're supposed to pay the.
Hello?
Yes, Rich?
Yeah, I agree, Nas. I think just to keep everybody in line, is if they do not comply by the date that we gave, then they jeopardize, they will jeopardize and go back to that original date and pay all that money. So I believe that this will get the job done by the way you laid that out.
Okay.
If I may, I would say too, if it's done prior to the 20th, come back, you know, we can give you the information. If you're keeping it open, right?
Yeah.
We would essentially, it would be withdrawn, or however you want to handle the case.
You just let us know.
Send a letter to you guys.
And Sonia would let the counselor know, your neighbors, and hopefully, nothing else happens in between. All right, you'll extend, you will give us an extension until.
The end of August? Decision deadline?
No, decision deadline till July 24.
24th, okay.
Because we're gonna, we said July, we're gonna meet July 10 and decide on that.
Okay.
Okay, so July 10 is the hearing that we will.
So we're going to remain open until July 10?
July 10, we have an extension 24. So by July 10, the 20 is not going to work. So it's going to be till July 10. I don't know why we pick a 20, it's a Saturday.
It's arbitrary.
So July 10, they have to have everything in order.
Okay. And if it's rectified prior, showing evidence, and then withdrawing?
Yeah, you let us know, and Sonia, she'll call us in. So July 10 is the date, and the extension, deadline, extension, decision deadline, July 24.
Right.
July 24, yes. No, 25, because we'll have to convene on the 24, decide if you don't give us one. I mean, if nothing happens. So it can't be the 24. So it has to be the 25. All right, that being said, I hope Patty's getting all that.
So for clarification, the July 20th date is dead?
Dead.
Okay, the new date is July 10?
July 10, and we need a deadline, decision, decision deadline for the 25th of July 2024.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I thought, I'm writing things down, so if we're meeting on the 20th, I mean, if we're meeting on the 10th, all this will be done and taken care of by the 20th, is that correct?
No, it has to be done by the 10th.
Right.
The 20 is a Saturday.
So the 20th is, everything has got to be done by the 20th? So I don't know why, are we pushing it out to the 25th now?
No. We've backed it up to the 10th, Richard. It's no longer, the 20th is a dead date. The 20th has been replaced with the 10th.
Okay.
They lost 10 days.
And then the 25th is?
25th, we get a decision deadline. If we don't, if we don't, so we could act on the 24th, the day before.
We'll have a decision by the 10th.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I guess, go ahead, motion to continue.
Yeah, so moved, motion to continue.
We have a motion to continue with these conditions until July 10, 2024. Until July 10, 2024, by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. With the. The thing is, we can't impose conditions, we hope.
We can't do anything, we're.
We hope your client do what we talked about.
Yep.
And whatever happened between in court, this is, this is you and them.
It's a separate matter.
That's a separate matter. I guess we just continue, can't impose conditions. So continue till the, who said, who made the motion?
I made the motion, Veronica seconded it.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. July 10. Thank you, councilor.
So, on that matter, when we discuss this, we're basically, we want to uphold the commissioner's decision that there is a violation, but we're gonna.
Well, once we just, when we come and, on the 10th, and nothing happened.
Then there's.
They'll have to pay the, if they didn't do nothing, then, and if they did, we could waive the fees. But if they didn't, we say, okay.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, okay, I'm good. Put this in the folder.
All right, we're gonna move to the public hearing, 1-24, Richard Wigan, Richard and Christine Wigan, special permit for 16 Turner Ave.,
For your reading pleasure. And for you.
You getting a call?
No.
Richard, I can't give you a copy of this, but there is one here for you, if you need to review it.
I'm looking at things online.
Got it online, okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 14th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 1-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 628, and Article 13, Section 1352. Under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Richard and Christine Wigan, care of Joseph Mardo of 1090 Walnut Plain Road, Rossetta, Mass., proposing to add a second floor to an existing home with unconditioned patio mudroom space for the property located at 16 Turner Ave., Wareham, Mass. This property appears on Wareham Assessor's Map 50F lot 107 in the R30 zoning district.
Okay, very well, name and address for the record?
My name is Christine L. Wigan, and our address is 16 Turner Ave., Wareham.
Richard C. Wigan, 16 Turner Ave., Wareham.
All right, so explain to us what you're trying to make.
We had a phase one done, and if you look at the assessor's reassessment on it, it was, phase one came out very, very nice. There's a nice photo of it. I think you have probably a copy of that.
Okay, that's the field card.
Yeah.
That's what you're showing me, yeah?
And I apologize, Joe could not be here, he was sick, he said he couldn't get out of bed, so. I prefer that he was here doing this, but I'll do the best I can to describe what's gonna take place. So phase one has been accomplished, and.
Excuse me, what's a phase one, I'm sorry?
Due to the FEMA rules.
Yeah.
Could do only 50%.
50% of the value, so.
Okay.
Phase one was accomplished over a year ago, and, and the value of the home has been increased. So phase two is just to put a existing building on top of the accessory building that's already existing on the property. And then the, um, space underneath is going to be used to get into the accessory building.
Unconditioned space.
Unconditioned space, with the breakaway walls kind of thing, so that we can use it as a bedroom as we age.
All right, so the shed, is this a house? Do you have a two families there?
It is a separate building with a full kitchen, bathroom, accessory building, and, and it's depicted that way in your, on your records at the city and town, it's. If you look through that paperwork, it shows that.
Paul, do you mind, Commissioner, is this a two-family?
It's own, single family, it's MR30.
I know, but is that a two units there? Two family, is this two families?
In my opinion, it's two independent houses, two principal structures.
I'm getting confused. So they're both on the same lot?
Same lot, sir.
And they're two, they're two houses?
Well, I think one, at one time was perhaps a garage, before we bought the, the place.
Before we bought it.
Yes, and then we do, we do receive and give two sewer bills, we always have.
I, I understand, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify.
I, so you get two sewer, it doesn't matter the sewer bill, but.
All right.
Let me see, where, what does it say here if it's a two-family in here?
Seven, seven feet apart, the structures.
The distance doesn't matter. One second, please, give me a minute.
While you're looking tonight.
Go ahead.
Where's 16 Turner Ave. in Wareham? I'm just, usually I know where everything is.
Sure.
What's it near?
Uh, Swift Beach Road, and then Pilgrim Road.
Okay, so it's Hamilton Beach?
Correct, sir. Yes.
Okay, so when I take a left at the fork there, if I go right, I go to Swift Beach, if I go left, I'm on Pilgrim, and then I keep going left, and I go out to Hamilton. Are you past where they have a, in the summertime, they have a person standing there, and they don't let, um, they, they, they have a guard there, and you can't get out to Hamilton Beach if you don't. Are you beyond, are you beyond that guard post?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Excuse me.
I just wanna know, you know, I just wanna get in my head what kind of property we are, and, you know, the lay of the land.
Mm-hmm, sure.
You know?
Chairman?
Yeah.
So, right now, it's two separate structures, so when I originally looked at this and what they were doing, so they're actually, the end product is gonna be a single family.
It's, it's re, a single family together?
Together.
Oh, you're gonna put it together?
They're gonna put it together.
Just by an unconditioned state.
You not build another house?
No, what was done in the past, I looked at it, that they're, they're actually fixing it, bringing it together.
Okay, okay, I got you, now I get you. All right, very well, so you're gonna add, put a bedroom, add and fix it? And do it according to FEMA and all these matter? And it's in, uh, let me see the site plan. You have a site plan here somewhere?
It's in the middle.
So you just can, they can, so you're connecting that car, or that shed with the house?
Correct, so we can have a first-floor bedroom.
Right, and are you pushing it outward?
No.
Just the same footing, same everything, the only thing?
Same footprint.
All right.
Same footprint.
All right, very well. All right, everybody get that?
I'm getting it.
All right.
I'm listening.
So this is, so apparently they have a FAR issue, they have a site and reset back issue, and, uh, and a floor area ratio issue, however, it's an existing non-conforming. If we, if we give them a relief on 1352, we could act upon it as a special permit. Doesn't, or 1353, then that doesn't have to be a variance, so that's my thought, so we start by Troy.
I don't have any questions right yet.
Veronica?
What's the current FAR on it?
46, they go on to 55.
So, my opinion when looking at these is, um, I like the idea of connecting it and creating it into one family, having that lower unit as, you know, added space to the initial. I think the second story makes it look really big, and I think it would, too big for the lot, honestly, looking at it. I, I think it would look better if it didn't have that second story on it. So I'm not, I'm not on board with the increase in the FAR, just because the size of the house for that lot would look really big.
Jimmy?
I haven't, I, I haven't really looked at it well enough to form an opinion, yea or nay, but, um, I'm not finding, I'm not feeling negative so far.
Is that reason you need a second floor?
Yes, there is, it's dormored, and it's already been framed to carry the building over on the second floor on the secondary structure.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Rich, what do you think?
I'm pretty, I'm in the, feeling pretty good about it. The cut-up of the house, the way it's been dormored and everything else, I mean, they're just looking for a little extra room. I'm, 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 I'm good with it at this point.
All right, anyone on the public wanna speak in favor of this matter? Yes, wanna come forward, please? Just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is James Doobie, I live on 16 Wall Ave., Wareham. Which is right around the corner from the Wiggins. I've just seen, along with myself and a lot of the other people that lived on it, is 112 cottages, and, uh, everyone that I've spoke to, including myself and my family, my mother-in-law, and extended family that's down there, the work that's been done on their property is beautiful, and we all wish them luck in continuing what they're trying to do to their property.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak in favor? Okay, anyone against? Anyone against online? Okay, nowhere. Okay. So you propose on the first floor a guest room, and the second floor a bedroom, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's not awfully big, Veronica, the building is not that big. I mean, it's big for the lot, but it's not big at all.
It's, it's not big for the neighborhood, you know, if you've driven through there.
Our opinion.
I feel like, I mean, maybe I would need a site visit by me to, to see it, but I, I just, looking at this and looking at the drawing, and what's on there now, I think that's really gonna change. It looks, oh, just looks big to me. We have a lot of oversized homes for the lots in Wareham, so it wouldn't be out of character to continue in that vein. But, there's a reason that there's planning for an FAR of a certain amount, and we, I think consistently ignore that.
May I just add?
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
We also own the property directly across from us, 15 Turner Ave., which we only have a, was it 16 by 20, or 12 by 20? 12 by 20 shed, and so the, it's not, it's permeable, and when we went to get the, the permit for the shed, he said we could only have it because of the fact that they're private roads that they meet in there. So I don't know if that makes a difference in how you feel about the percentage.
So you, you own across the street?
Correct.
And it's, it's part, it's part of the lot, the, the road goes through the lot, excuse me?
Yes, there, there is.
The road cuts through the lot?
But it's private, so they consider it an abutting lot. But, but, I guess she's trying to express the concern over permeable land.
Yeah.
Being used up, 78, or 98 square feet.
Right.
With the underbuilding, you know, that's gonna remain open, and we also.
Except for the shed that's there already, but it's all open.
Right.
Okay.
So you're concerned about the size and the open land around it?
Yeah, mhm, that's right.
That's what I'm trying, I think you're trying to say, right?
Yes.
All right.
So is the property across the street, excuse me, is the property across the street under a separate deed, or under the same deed as this property that we're?
Separate deed, I gifted it to my wife as a Christmas present many years ago.
Okay, you gave her a garage?
A shed?
No, I gave her a vacant lot.
Yeah.
Is there a table saw or anything in that garage?
Which we put a shed on way later.
Okay, okay, so you gave her a vacant lot, and you put a shed on it, and what's, what's in the, what's that? Like lawn chairs and stuff like that?
Yes.
Lawnmowers, lawn chairs.
Permeable, that, that seems to be a point that you made obvious.
Yes.
Does that mean it's buildable?
No, permeable means it'll absorb water, 'cause one of the concerns was, the objections was, we were gonna use up more permeable land, the percentage 55.
And, and I heard, I heard something about sewer connections in the conversations.
I only, I only was trying to clarify, 'cause I think you were trying to, to establish whether it was a two-family or a single family, but we've always paid for two different sewer things, but it's always been a single-family home.
Why you pay for two?
I don't, we.
Because they send them a bill and they pay the bill.
We didn't object, I guess.
It's two buildings, it's two buildings, two separate cars.
Yeah.
Downtown, where it says a primary resident and a guest house, or.
But we've never, you know, it's never been used as before we lived there or after, as a two-family.
It has the same water source.
Must, it, was, was it, were they, were they both owned separately at one point, or?
No, not to our knowledge. Not to our knowledge, the co-ba.
And, and the land across the street that you, that you didn't build a garage on, you put a shed on.
Mm-hmm.
That was a vacant lot, and, and it has a sewer connection, or it does not?
No, it does not.
It does not?
The woman that owned that piece of property failed to build on it, and was not, I built a grandfather, whatever, but it was too small to build a home on it. But we bought it for the access, to be able to have parking, and.
So somebody could, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I, but I listen to the lawyers, and so the lawyers could argue, because it's private property, that now that you own it, and, and you gave it to your wife, but is your wife on, on the deed that, in the house you live in?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so you might as well have just given it to yourself, because.
Right. Everything I have is his, and vice versa.
So because the road, the road's not, you, you own the road, so it's contiguous, and I would argue, if, I'm not a lawyer, but I would suggest that there's lawyers that would argue it's all one lot. I would suggest to you, I would suggest to you, this is kind of beyond unsolicited, advice is worth what it costs, zero. But I would suggest to you that you would combine all three lots into one deed, pay somebody to, to prepare that document, record that document at the registry. I would suggest to you that you go to the town of Wareham and say, stop sending me two $600 a year sewer bills, I only have one home, and keep your, and, and cut your sewer bill in half.
We didn't wanna piss anyone off.
And, and I would suggest to you that this board might look at it favorably if it was all one lot, because now your FAR has changed, the percentage has changed.
Okay.
Anyway. Okay, what's, uh, anyone else wants to speak on this matter on the public? I hear none. What's the wishes of board? Do you wanna close, continue? What do you want?
Excuse me?
We've, we've helped, we've opened it to the public, nobody wanted to comment, I guess we could close the public portion. Rich, did you have something to say?
Oh, I just thought, yes, I did, I, I just thought that Veronica said that she needed more time, that's all.
You know, I did, Rich, and I appreciate that, the explanation from the applicant, though, is making me look at this a little bit differently, if you're owning, and it's basically, the house is part of all of that area, the FAR really isn't what it looks like on paper.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to close then.
So moved.
Motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Before we go forward, don't we, don't we get the green cards, and we're supposed to check them?
We, we have the, um, oh, the green cards, right.
Right here. They're not green, they're photocopies, but.
We're supposed to go over that.
Okay, then let's do it. I'll, I'll tell you the ones I got, and you can check them off, or vice versa, or if you wanna, you got a pen?
Just notes, some little bit more.
I got one from 7, 572 O'Connell. You got it?
Pleasant Street?
Michelle O'Connell, 572 plus, oh, that's their address, right?
Yeah.
Have Veronica do it, yeah.
Where's the, where's the property that this is, this doesn't tell you what?
Oh, the, the map, the lot map.
The name isn't on there?
You gotta go here.
We do have a map that came with it. Do we have to look at those numbers?
There's no O'Connell on that list.
Veronica said yes.
Yeah, O'Connell's on here. Fifty-five seventy-two Pleasant Street is their mailing address, I believe. It says that their map and law is fifty dash, fifty dot one oh six.
Yep.
That's on there. Okay, Wigan, sixteen Turner. Anybody see that?
Yep.
Maloney at Hundred Webster Street in Westwood.
Yep.
Reardon. I think they're from Mills, Mass.
Cosby, yep.
We got Bennett from Kansas City, Montana.
Yep.
Big Sky out to the Little Sky in Wareham.
Third one down.
What's this? D'Angelo?
Yep.
Capri Bianco, Capo Bianco.
Yep.
Turnquist?
Yep.
Pachico?
Yep.
Arno?
Yes.
Farady? Are you checking them off so that there's?
I am.
Okay, so that we, so there'll be, if there's anybody. McGovern?
Yep.
Trustee Peterson?
Yep.
D'Loisa?
Yes.
Ricky Otto?
Yes.
King? Thomas and Rebecca King?
Yes.
Larissy?
Yes.
Ianucci?
Uh, yep.
Milligan?
Yes.
Wigan, again, another sixteen. They got two notices of the same address?
Because of the fifteen, the one across the street.
Richard, Richard and, oh, you mailed yourself. Do you talk to yourself too?
Sometimes.
Do you get good answers? That's the question. Uh, Mulligan, Milligan?
Yep, there's two of them.
McCluster?
Yes.
Dryer?
Yep.
Blackwell?
Yep.
McCarrick?
Yep.
That's all I got.
That's it.
That's everybody?
Let it go. Did we close? Okay, what's the wishes? First of all, you guys wanna act as a, you think it's detrimental, not substantially detrimental, you wanna go as a special permit?
I, seeing that, no, the one guy got up in favor and nobody was opposed, I'd say it's non-detrimental to the neighborhood based on that alone.
Okay, so, so therefore we're gonna act as a-
Special.
As a special permit. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it's special permit. Now on a special permit?
I, I grant, I grant. I move to grant relief as requested.
All right.
Standard conditions.
We have the standard conditions and the findings, not substantially detrimental to the neighborhoods, but for the special permit. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. Carrie's five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move forward to two dash twenty-four Ryan Vlaco, Berkeley Ryan Realty Trust, seventy-two B Burgess Point.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, oh two five seven one, to consider petition number two dash twenty-four for a variance or variances, if multileaked needed, from the requirements of Article Six, Section six twenty-five, Note Two and Note Five, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Ryan Vlaco, trustee of the Berkeley Ryan Realty Trust, care of attorney Jillian Morton of one eighty-four Main Street, Wareham, Mass, proposing to construct a two thousand four hundred and twenty-four square foot, two-story detached garage in the front yard, located at seventy-two B Burgess Point Road, Wareham, Mass, which appears on Wareham Assessors' Map twenty-two, one zero zero six A two, in the R sixty zoning district. Okay.
All right, great. Attorney Jillian Morton here, one eighty-four Main Street, here for the applicant. So you heard the notice of hearing and I think what's important to do would be to go to the commissioner's letter so you know what Note Two and Note Five are and why I'm in front of you seeking two variances. So we're, we're talking about accessory, accessory buildings today. So the first one, you're very familiar with. We're in Burgess Point, looking for a variance from the front setbacks, the fact that the garage is gonna be in front of the primary residence. This is of, I would say, the majority of the homes over there have their garages in front. Due to the topography of the land, it's been tried and tested variance as far as the topography and the hardship there. So it's, you know, the second one, the Note Five regarding the size, I wanna focus on cause in R sixty, the maximum size you can have in a accessory building is nine hundred square feet. Just to acclimate you, if you wanna look at the site plan that you have in your packet, we're down at the edge, the end of Burgess Point. These properties, when we're talking about a garage being over twenty-four hundred square feet, you might think that that's a lot. Well, the big, the main structure might be ten thousand square feet, right? So this is a three-car garage. The upstairs is gonna be storage. It is not gonna be a dwelling. It's not gonna be an apartment. Do you wanna make-
Can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
You said the main structure would be ten thousand square feet. I think you meant one thousand.
What I'm talking about is the houses themselves, meaning not the garage.
The principal, okay.
What I'm trying to acclimate you is twenty-four hundred square feet seems like a lot, but this, these are larger homes.
They're big, big homes. Okay, I got you.
So we have in the packets, you can see the, the nice design of the property. That's near the, the end, the renderings. We have the three-car garage and then it is labeled storage. There is a bathroom up there. I know that it's been a concern of this board in regards to people putting apartments up there. I think that can be easily remedied by making a specific condition within a variance if approved, just to kind of button that up so people don't do that. So what we're looking for, the far, the size is three vehicles. So obviously it exceeds the nine hundred square feet. The bedroom, the bedroom count in the house itself is six bedrooms. So there's a main house with a garage attached that's three cars. And then this is gonna be a separate structure with another three cars. So we're really looking to have these available six car spots. So if there's people over, it has room for the, for the six vehicles, the six bedrooms. So as far as the reason why it's larger is because of the, due to the fact of the home and the size. This has already been approved through conservation, which obviously doesn't have precedent here, but I know one of the concerns is usually the wetlands and conservation. We hit every other requirement dimensionally. So often there's an issue with the setbacks or, like as far as the side setbacks or, or anything like that. Square footage, we have sixty-eight thousand square feet on the, on the lot, which we're conforming. So this would be the, the two things that'd be non-conforming about this lot.
All right. Do you, do you have a two-by-two plans or only these small plans?
I thought I submitted, you don't have any. There's, there should be two copies of the big plans. You don't have any?
They're big.
No. Can you see it online?
There's no big-
I'm looking now.
Maybe there's one, nope, there's not one in here.
Okay.
So-
Usually do at least two. Sorry about that.
While I'm looking, while I'm looking, can somebody check that list, Veronica?
I actually have for you, if you'd like.
I'll read off those cards again. One of you guys can-
While they doing this, we had, we had some-
Okay, thanks.
You saying there's not gonna be a apartment or nothing upstairs? We had to grant it such thing in the neighborhood, for Higgins, I believe, end up being-
Which is why I'm saying it, cause that was obviously my case as well.
People end up living in there.
So I think that it's important that you put that within the variance. So then if there, if he figures out that there is that, then you can pull the whole variance. It's a big deal. It's a violation. So people need to not do that, cause obviously there's fire codes and all that. You put a bathroom up there, you know, this could be like a man cave kind of thing if he wanted to have like a, a, somewhere, but it's not somewhere to sleep. So, and that's, they checked them out.
I know. And they says, if they tell us to stay out of their property, what we tell them? If they violate?
I don't know. That's the commissioner would call, I guess, Chief Korea. I mean, they have to pull the permits to, to do the garage, the plumbing, all that, and he has to sign off on it. So-
Understand. Let's say they do and they go do it illegally, then what we do?
You can send a notice of a-
That big of a storage area if it's, why does it have to look like that?
Well, it's just the, the second floor on the three-car garage. So, I mean, as far as storage goes, you have a six-bedroom house. Oh, you all set? So do you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I think we might be missing somebody on here.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the list, but I don't see a-
Sometimes we don't get them back if people don't sign them. Which one are you saying that?
I don't see them on the, on this photocopy.
We got five cards, we got seven names.
You don't need the-
We got six signatures.
One of them's my client, though.
How many receipts you have?
Oh, who's your, what?
Valco.
Rhodes did not receive, Matthew Rhodes.
On the, was not sent out?
I, I don't see a receipt.
Yes, it's, okay.
The receipt, oh.
You don't need the, the green cards, Veronica, just the receipt like that.
Yeah, Gillian gave me this.
You see it uploaded online?
They're not on this receipt, paper.
Is it on the green receipt, though?
I'll check.
Okay.
So there's seven names and we got five cards.
Okay.
So one didn't.
I'll, hot, yeah.
And one of the seven names is-
I'll call Matt Rhodes if it's a problem.
It's here.
Okay, yeah. And I know that my paralegal sends that over to Sonia ahead of time. So, but yeah, the homes over there, Matt Rhodes just built a larger home. There's another, there's, they're larger homes than to have this twenty-four hundred square foot garage. And I know you're saying, why does it need to have the upstairs? It's storage for the second floor.
That's a lot of-
How would you make that half, you know, just?
It's a lot of storage. Now, Commissioner, isn't there a height restriction also on,
It's thirty-five.
Accessory, not accessory structures, and twenty feet?
It's only on the small lots.
Only on the small lots?
Mm-hmm. I'll check, but.
You sure?
Yeah, I'll check.
Why did we have to grant a variance on that big warehouse? Because it's twenty feet only. It's an R sixty.
The one over in West Wareham, on the pond there, yeah. That was a while back, good memory.
All right, while he's checking, Troy, what do you think?
I, I, I don't know why there has to be a bathroom up there.
Well, at seventy-two, I know why they need a bathroom on the second story of a three-car garage.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Because when you're in that garage and it's cold out or whether it's warm out and you gotta pee, you have to run over to the house forty times an hour. You know, you get worn out and then you give up on the project.
So we're gonna need two variances, one for having the garage in the front and one for having bigger garage. Supposed to be nine hundred square, they were-
Yeah, we gotta give them a-
Twenty-four hundred.
Yeah.
So two variances. Veronica, what do you think?
So for the variance to have the garage in the front, I do see the hardship, the way that everything is laid out on the lot. I don't, however, see a hardship to allow such a large structure for a garage. And at the least, I would say it should not have a second floor. I do think there's an issue or could potentially be an issue with residents on the upper floor. But regardless, there's no hardship there to have such a large structure. I think if it were a single story, about nine hundred square feet, it could be designed in such a way that I think it could look nice.
Even if the second floor wasn't there, it'd be over in the nine hundred square feet. These, a nine hundred square foot garage on this lot would look frankly silly, you know, as far as-
So with two floors, you're at twenty-two and I'm looking at-
Right, so it's still gonna be over no matter what we do, which I'm, I'm happy to talk to the client about, you know, that, that second floor.
How big is that lot?
Well, I'm looking at the-
Sixty-eight thousand square feet.
I'm looking at the attached garage now.
Yeah.
And the footprint of the garage that they're proposing is considerably bigger than the one that is currently there that I'm guessing looks okay.
Is this, are you done? I didn't mean to-
I'm done, sorry.
Is this, when I go up to Burgess Point, I'm pretty sure Windship Avenue goes up and then somebody didn't like it going down to the boathouse. They put a gate right across it and they stopped it. And then if you took that gate down and kept going, you could get to the boathouse. Is this one of the houses that would be right there on the left, right near the boathouse?
Yeah, it's, it's over right. There's only like four or five bigger lots. They're long there, rectangular lots that have docks.
I know the property.
As far as-
It's a big, it's a big place.
Yeah.
It's a big place. If I had the money to own that property, I'd want a twenty-four hundred square foot, three-car garage with a bathroom upstairs. That would just, you know, I could only dream being able to afford something like that.
Yeah, well, I just think that the reason for these notes and, and the size requirements, I think, is a lot of it's aesthetics, you know, as far as having a garage in front. Get that, right? This, you've talked about that this is waterfront property. We have the topography. I also will say that the driveway goes up considerably. So there's gonna be, you might not even see the garage from the actual driveway, cause of the, the greenery in front and the trees. So that's, if you look at the site plan, it's not like we're right on the edge of the road. So as far as who's gonna even be able to see this? No one really, but the homeowner.
It's not online, by the way. It just, like, the application.
Okay.
I don't see the plan.
Yeah.
Do we have any, have we opened this? Have we asked for public comment yet?
Not yet. Rich, what do you think?
I'm, 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 I'm all right with it. Again, it looks a little big, but, and I'm on the side of Jim. If I had the money and I had the space and the, or the ability to build something like that, I would. So that's where I feel on that.
Just because I can't afford it doesn't mean I wanna stop somebody that can.
I understand.
Exactly.
That's the way, you know.
I, I think the zoning laws wanna stop somebody who can, regardless of income.
A lot of people that vote for the zoning laws, that's, I, I don't, I'm just not big on, you know, this is America. I just think it's a great property, it fits. It just doesn't, I don't find anything offensive about it. If the, if the neighbors were here saying, oh my God, we don't want that Monstrosi in our neighborhood, you know, we've all got a two-family, a two-bedroom slab houses and we can barely make our mortgage payments and we don't want that thirty, ten million dollar house across the street. It's, it's a detriment to the neighborhood. Makes us all look bad. You know, I might feel bad for them. But you're in a neighborhood with beautiful homes, big, good-sized lots. The, the houses up there are wonderful. They're gorgeous and they're gonna put up a structure that's gonna be equally nice and equally gorgeous and size appropriate to what they're struck, their, their primary house. They got a six-bedroom house overlooking the water and they want a three-car garage. They could probably have six cars if they want, you know.
It would be a six car because they currently have a three-car attached to the house.
Pardon me?
They currently have a three-car garage attached to the house, so it would be six.
Maybe they do have six cars.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not against- I'm not, I'm, I'm not against what you're talking about when somebody wants to do these beautiful things.
It's enough argument.
It's not an argument, it's just, you know.
We go to the public, just voice your opinion with the vote. We go to the public, anyone wanna speak against this matter? Anyone in favor? All right. So going back to the subject, so you basically add in like four, eight hundred square feet to two stories, right?
No, no, it's-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twelve and twelve.
Twelve and twelve.
Yeah, twelve and twelve, so-
Twelve and twelve.
Even if we were to take that second floor off, we're gonna be over the nine hundred.
What's the height, Commissioner, do you find out?
Yep. They're fine with the height, the, the twenty-foot restrictions on ten thousand square feet are less lot size.
All right. So you're looking for a variance for the three, four hundred square feet size and the front? Okay. Going back, Troy, any more comment, Veronica?
No.
No comment, Jim? Richard?
What's that?
Before we close, any more comments before we close?
Uh, no, not, not at this time.
Okay, and I don't have any comments, anything before we close?
Well, I guess I'd wanna just have the, if it's gonna go negative, I'd rather have the opportunity to, to go back and see if he did, wants different plans. So I don't know if, you know, either way, even if the second floor, okay.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
We have motion to close this public hearing by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Now, it's closed. All right, on the first variance for the unit, for the garage to be in front, can we have a motion?
I, I move to allow the, the garage to be further towards the street than the residence.
Okay, as proposed, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, and the finding it meets the statutes, statute required, requirement, MGL forty A, section ten, I hope you get in this party. So we have second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye, that carries, on the second variance to have it, uh, three hundred.
Is it a variance or is it a, um, variance?
Variance to have it, and that, twelve, how was it, twelve hundred twenty square feet?
Twenty-four hundred?
No, no, the footprint.
The footprint is twelve hundred and change, but you have to go by the twenty-four hundred square feet.
Why?
Cuz that's how much that building has in it. So if they built a one-story building with open ceiling, it would just be twelve hundred square feet. This is a two-story structure.
Doesn't go by footprint?
No.
The garage don't go by foot, oh, it's an accessory?
It's accessory-
It's all buildings, garages, residents, I've always been-
Yeah.
I understand, let, let the commissioner, go ahead.
You have two floors, so both floors count.
On, on the garage or the pond?
Yeah.
I understand.
Mm-hmm, so it's twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred. Okay, so on the variance for twenty-four hundred, uh, can we have a motion on that, if somebody wishes?
If, uh, I make a motion to grant the FAR twenty-four hundred square feet, and for them to build by the plan that's been submitted with standard conditions.
It's not FAR, right, it's just a variance, strict variance.
No, I don't think it's an FAR, it's just the nine hundred square feet is the rule.
There's no FAR problem?
No.
Okay, so simply-
Maximum size.
Maximum size is nine hundred square feet, they're proposing two thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet.
Max size. I make a motion to give them a variance for the size up to twenty-four hundred square feet.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, and the finding meets statute requirements for MGL forty A, section ten. Any conditions on that?
What's the requirement that's met, if I might?
What requirement?
What hardship is met?
We, we're not, I discuss on-
Oh, I thought you said it met the hardship.
That, that's, I'm talking to Patty, we're not, we're discussing the matter no more. We're not discussing, it's not open for discussion, just a vote.
It's not, it's closed to the public, not to the board.
All right.
Okay.
I understand, go ahead.
I'm, I'm done.
You can discuss, it's open for discussion for us.
There's no hardship, is all I'm saying. But I know that we're making the vote, so.
No, no, but you could discuss.
I did, I'm done.
Troy?
I, I have nothing, I'm good.
All right, Jim, you wanna discuss anything?
Jim or Rich?
I mean, Rich, sorry, I keep going with Jim.
Yeah, so, um, lost my train of thought there. So I thought that the hardship was explained to, because of the topographical shape of the lot, being that the garage would be better off down there, so I thought there was some kind of a hardship covered.
That was for the last, that was for the vote to have the garage in front of the house, not for the size. There were two different things that we're voting on.
Did you get that, Rich?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I did.
So what do you think of the size?
I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it, okay.
I make a motion to grant a variance for the garage to be built by the plans as presented at twenty-four hundred and twenty-four square feet with standard conditions.
Would you be okay, Veronica, with one story? Like, just, like, not even, just the roof? No storage above? So twelve hundred twenty square feet?
I would feel better about it, but I, I think that you guys, you know, the board is gonna vote
Not necessarily.
How they feel, but I ju- just even looking at the plan, looking at the existing garage, it looks significantly smaller in terms of, they're saying that it wouldn't, I, I'm, the applicant feels that it wouldn't look good if it were held to size, and that's what they're asking us to overlook. But if you look at the size of the existing attached three-car garage to that house, that's probably, I would guess, close to nine hundred square feet. It's footprint of the foundation, if you compare it to, to what they're looking to put of twelve hundred foundation size, so. But definitely I would feel better about it if it didn't have a second story.
Okay, so here's the motion. You could second with the condition. Go ahead.
It doesn't have to be seconded, and then the motion just dies.
Jim's motion was for twenty-four hundred square feet, which would be a second story.
Okay. Back to discussion, so she's, she's not going for this, I'm not either, so.
So my motion's da- dead? It didn't get, it didn't get a second?
I'll second the motion. You're kinda go, you're kinda going in circles on me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow here. So are we, are we voting, do you need a second? I will second this motion.
He's second that. Okay, Rich, second for twenty-four hundred square feet. Garage, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Nay.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I guess it's me. I really agree with Veronica, but I'm gonna let it go, yes. So four zero zero, four zero one.
Four, one zero, right?
Four one zero. Okay, we go to three dash twenty-four, Richard Zine, ten Charlie Ave.
Let's put that one away before I read the other one in, please.
You all set with that, boy?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll take this. That's a bigger one. Then we're looking for three twenty-four Zine. And one, there you go.
It's gonna be a little more difficult.
Two, there you go, guys. Thank you, thank you for doing those cards while I read this.
No problem, you're welcome, Mr. Secretary.
I think, correct?
I do believe that Veronica did raise her hand and say she would do the card, so.
I did, actually.
I mean, cuz, not for nothing, guys-
I remember too, she wanted to be the secretary to the clerk.
Not for nothing, but being on the Zoom and watching that whole matter with the green cards, I think it seriously needs to be looked at before the meeting, and somebody can check it off, because you've got a perfectly flowing meeting, and then all of a sudden you stop and start asking about all these things? I, I don't see it working, I, I think we could clean it up, put it that way.
I couldn't agree more, Richard, but with, what we're doing for now, I guess. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February fourteen, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wayham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass, zero two five seven one, to consider petition number three dash twenty-four for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Section six thirteen, under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Richard Zine, care of attorney Gillian Morton of one eighty-four Main Street, Wayham, Mass, proposing to construct a second principal structure connected by a walkway located at ten Charlie Ave, Wayham, Mass. This will appear on assessors map three, lot one oh two eight B, in the MR thirty zoning district.
All right, counsel.
All right. So here we are, um, you acclimated, Charlie Ave is right off of onset, a kind of a cross from Baypoint. Everyone know where that is?
I know where Charlie Ave is.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, and thank you for-
I know, just sometimes visualizing it.
Sometimes I forget, and it's right across from the old Cass station, it goes straight against.
Yes, yep, yep, so-
It's not a Cass anymore.
We represent the Zine family, and Mr. Zine built his home over there, and now we're looking to have essentially a kind of breezeway and a, an in-law apartment. We're looking for this because of a hardship that I think everyone can relate to of having parents aging and, and wanting to make sure that we can take care of them. So his wife is a full-time caregiver for his mother. And looking at, at this site in particular, it actually does allow for, um, like duplexes and things like that, but that's not, if, if you were to drive down there and see, see the home that he's built, that's not what he's trying to do here. So you'd have like a causeway, and to have this one bedroom with a kitchenette bathroom, that they can easily go in and, and help her if she needs, needs something, is, is what we're looking to do. The site itself actually has quite a bit of square footage, so, and frontage, so we're not needing any relief in regards to that. The commissioner in his letter had proposed that this is essentially like a second, um, primary dwelling, just because it's, it's not connected in the way of like a duplex would. I think this fits the nature of the neighborhood. My client also, in the end of your packet, there's, I don't know how many signatures, quite a, quite a bit of signatures in favor of this. I would say, I don't know, over twenty or so. No one seems to have an issue with the fact that thinking that this will deteriorate from the neighborhood. The build that he's created already, um, it's gonna be that same kinda nature. The look and everything will look seamless, so we do believe that there is a hardship here, and that it will help the neighborhood, and there's, there's no real opposition that I've, I'm aware of, so. If you-
You don't have a site plan with that?
No, there's no, no site plan.
Okay, why is that?
Just didn't-
Well, it's an addition, you know, essentially an addition.
You still need it to build it.
Yeah, well-
Well, our application-
Mr. Chairman, I have some, if you like.
Yeah, can I have it, please?
Mr. Chair?
Just for the record, everybody's listening on, on TV or whatever, our, our rules are clear, we needed two-by-three site plans. This is, I mean, we can't really read them, but, but right now it's fine, but from now on, we will not hear any hearing if it doesn't have what the packet requests, please.
Hello, Commissioner?
Yes.
So I'd just like to address the board, I'm gonna have to recuse myself of this matter. The Zines have become in-laws, my son married their daughter, and this family is very family-oriented. They take good care of them, they, they're an awesome bunch of people, and I believe that I need to recuse myself, but just stating that they have done, they're, they're a great batch of people, and I know that's not how we go, but I'm just, I gotta step away from this because of this matter, be, being a relative, so I'm just gonna leave this now.
Okay, very well, thank you. Do you wanna proceed with four?
Yes.
Now, uh, where is the, what is the addition on the site plan, is it that one on the side here? Please, I'm sorry to make you, but I, it doesn't show a proposed addition.
Yeah, so it's gonna, this would be the addition, right here with the porch.
Uh, this one here?
Yeah, so the causeway goes there.
So, oh, that whole, the addition's right here? That, you, you have to walk to get to it?
Yeah, there's a, a porch, a porch, there's actually a big-
Gonna be a roof between the two?
I-
Or a deck?
Yeah, so it's a, it's actually a farmer's porch, if you picture that house, it's not the first house, but the second house in, so it's gonna extend on, and, and go to the next in-law.
So you build, basically you're building two families?
But not connecting it, cuz we need to have the access of her-
Accessory, uh, apartments are not allowed in that zoning, in that district.
Right, which is why I're in front of you.
All right, you don't have the square footage, you have the frontage, but that, do you have the frontage?
We don't have any dimensional issues that I saw, but the commissioner can correct me if-
You need forty-five thousand.
Need forty-five thousand square feet, you have thirty-two thousand.
We have forty-two.
You have thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
The frontage, I, you don't even have the frontage, uh, you have both roads. Do you, can you add both roads, Commissioner?
I believe so, yes.
You have the frontage, you don't have the footage. And zoning does not allow two units there, so why they don't build it attached to it? If, if it's for the in-law for caring, it's right there.
Yeah, I mean, as far as-
And make a bigger, big additions.
Yeah, aesthetically pleasing and having like dissembling walls.
I mean, the board, we, we you know, we are not in favor of creating two units in the same lot.
Right, but you have made exceptions and allowed for family members on variances. You have done that in the past.
We have, we allow them connected, not loose like that. I mean, I understand they're great people, but eventually things go on and they sell it, and becomes two unit, and rental unit.
Then it's in violation of the variance, then the deed restriction.
Yeah.
No, the, once it's, it's, uh, once we create, there's no, we cannot, deed is say only for in-laws. Once you create the, the second unit, you creating a second unit.
On the variance of one of the conditions, though, you can put that it's only family members. I have seen that from this board before.
I don't think it's also, anyway, uh, Troy, what do you think?
I understand, but like you, I'd like to see it connected.
Yeah, I like to see it connected and looking like a single family, and be passage inside, not a separate entrance, not two units, like a big addition, basically. And then you, you would don't, you won't need us.
Can I take this for a second, thank you?
Just a big addition. Veronica, what do you think?
Well, I actually have a question, and I'm not sure yet, I, I tend to agree with what the board's saying at the moment, but, um, let's say that the board did approve that there was a separate second principal unit here. It would be a non-conforming lot, could it potentially at some point then be divided and sold as two separate homes?
Anything can happen.
That's my question, I just, I, out of-
Not in my opinion, no, you've had two principal dwellings come before you, that's on the same lot, and you would not let them split it, they had to condoize it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they need a var- variance to, to, to make two separate lots, it'll be a hard variance. They need a variance to make two separate lots. It'll be a hard variance, but.
I was just curious about that, but I tend to agree that I think it probably should be connected.
I mean, it is connected with the porch.
If they doing a full care for the in-law, they want to be near her. Why, I mean, making the path, that's far.
Well, perhaps it might be helpful to do a site visit so you can see where it would be and how the porch, you know, is set.
No, I know what's going with the guy.
So, let me just be clear. I, they want to connect the two buildings with kind of like a deck, like a pier going across the marsh, just a small, narrow wooden walkway.
It's a farmer's porch in the front and on the side.
Farmer's porch on the house, but then, but the, there's not going to be a roof on the walkway going between the two buildings.
No, there will, will miss.
I shouldn't say, I shouldn't tell you that it's not. I'm asking you.
No, 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 it's fine.
I posed it as a statement.
The one hardship.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Zine, 10 Charlie Ave., Onset, Mass. So the one hardship I have about connecting it right to it is that all the main electrical, gas lines, everything goes right down the side of the yard and right into the house, so that financially, after speaking to a few people, they said that probably wouldn't be worth it at that point. I have my Generac home generator system there and I have two AC condensers and all the main gas lines and electrical come right into that side. That's why I was proposing a farmer's porch from farmer's porch to farmer's porch at the same exact height. There'd be no step down, step up. It would just connect right to the new structure so my wife could easily get right to my mom if she had to without any interruptions. If I could do it that way, I would. If I could put her in my house, I would. I have a good-sized, oversized cape, I guess, but I have 13 steps that go up and 13 steps that go down. She's 82. She can barely walk on her own as it is. So that's one of the reasons I'm trying to propose to make this happen, so I could get her close to my house, my wife, could take care of her at that point.
I mean, I hope she lives to 100, but what happened after, I mean, a few years? What are you gonna do with that addition?
At that point, one of my kids, or I have six kids, so I don't know. Hopefully she lives.
You have five kids. Your wife just held her hand up unless you count your wife.
I think of my mother. I was thinking of her as the sixth, but one of them might.
That's all right. I know lots of guys treat their wife like a child.
But that's the hardship I have as far as connecting it directly to the house.
Troy, what do you think?
I don't have anything right now.
So would this house be on the same meters and everything that you currently have or would it be completely separate in terms of utilities?
It could be on the same. I was gonna have it separate, but it could be on the same. There is, I know when I purchased the lot, the lady who I purchased from, she was paying bediments for four sewer connections and the town only allowed her one, so that was the house that I built. So there's still two more connections out there I could easily tie into it, or I dig up my yard and connect it to mine, either way. I proposed on my house a four-bedroom. There's only two bedrooms, so I have it in my existing house to connect to that, or I can bring in, would be quicker and easier to connect that structure right to the new bediment, so.
They're gonna charge you for two anyway, so might as well use the street ladder.
Yeah.
They will charge you for two as well.
So all your utilities come in between the two structures, is that what it is?
Yeah.
And in order to make it all one structure, they'd make you move all the utilities?
Yeah, all the gas comes in underneath there, goes into the house, the main electrical comes in and all the equipment I have set up there.
Is it underground electric?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gas and electric. What else is there?
That's basically just what the two condensers and the Generac generator system, it's all plumbed in through on that side of the houses. That's where the mechanical room is, right through that wall. It's all fenced in with.
I get, I'm just, you know, moving the meter to the front of the house wouldn't be a big deal for the gas. Moving the underground electric service under, in a conduit, under a crawl space, wouldn't be a big deal. Everything, I get it that it's gonna cost more money, I get it, but it costs a hell of a lot more to put her in a nursing home. So I don't mean that as, flipping, I'm not being disrespectful in any, I don't mean it that way. I'm just, I'm hearing different members of the board. I know the neighborhood. It's not a two-family neighborhood. You know, I'm dead and gone 10, 15 years from now, there's another board and there's a new owner, your mother's dead and gone, you're old and you've sold the house and gone to Florida and the new owner comes in and says, you know, I need a variance here. Or they don't come in and they just put two tenants, a tenant, and it's gonna happen, you know, it's happening all over the place. So what we're trying to do is prevent it. And the only way to prevent it really, in my, in my observation so far, is to say we'd be more inclined to, I'd be more inclined to approve this if there was a roof between the two structures. Your wife's gonna get sick of running out of the house across the deck with chicken soup in the winter.
I hope not, but.
You know, when it's raining, when it's snowing, or when it's really 110 degrees out and the air conditioner's, you know. So, I mean, you know, that indoor-outdoor thing sounds good when you're trying to save money, but you might be saving more money doing it right now.
I just didn't think the aesthetics of a roof with a walkway would look connecting two structures. That's why I kind of incorporated the farmer's porch to farmer's porch.
It would definitely look good. What are you doing? But.
Just, that's all I have to.
Why don't we continue it? Let's sleep on it. Let us drive by.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Get us a big site plan for next time with two-by-three. Let's get a two-by-three, two-by-three site plan. Is it signed, that one, by surveyor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get a two-by-three for next time? And let's all drive by whoever wishes to.
I know Richard will. He's good about that.
I'll drive by and we'll see on the 28th. How's that? Would that work?
Thank you.
Yep.
Richard, I know you've recused yourself, but you can, you can still, in my opinion, you can still speak and add information that's helpful to the board.
Well, thank you, but I think it's better if I say, just stay quiet.
All right, so can we get a motion, continue until?
No move.
We have a motion to continue this matter until February 28, 2024. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see on the 28th. For whoever wanna comment or not comment, you will not get another card, so make sure you show up on the 28th. You will not be notified, so if you wanna listen to it again, just show up on the 28th.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We move to 4-24. James and Colleen Dubey, variance and special permit, 16 Warrell Ave.
We voted on that, didn't we? Did we vote on continuing?
Yeah.
500, I did, I'm sorry.
400.
Four, four, sorry, you're right, thank you. There you go, 400. Too many going on at the same time. February 28. We'll get to, I'm gonna read you in a minute. I want to get these back in this folder, otherwise.
Veronica, did you get, checked that? Did you check that?
I'm still checking it. You want to, just come.
Is that gonna go in this folder or is that something that Jillian gave you?
Jillian gave me this.
Jillian's all right. And this is yours from this last one or no? What's this last one? Yeah, I think this is it. You don't need this, do you?
No.
Okay. Thanks for waiting. Make sure we don't get stuff cross-filled and it also gives the engineer time to set up his easel, you know.
The one, engineer with the easel.
Engineer with the easel, that's it. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 14, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 24, sorry, petition number 4-24 for a variance, RE special permit from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1355 and Section 1356, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to James and Colleen Dubey of 16 Warrell Ave., Wareham, Mass., proposing to demolish the existing structure and replace with a single-family home located at 16 Warrell Ave., Wareham, Mass., which will appear on the Wareham SSAS Map 50-F, Lot 116, in the R30 zoning district. Thank you.
Very well.
James Dubey, 16 Warrell Ave.
Colleen Dubey, 16 Warrell Avenue.
Okay.
And Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering, we did the site plan.
Let's hear it. Go ahead. Who wants to present the case?
So basically, my wife and I bought the property at 16 Warrell Ave. 14 years ago and it's a summer cottage. And at this point, we'd like to knock it down and build a single-family home on the property, which will be conservation, you know, clear, we've been through that already, and flood zone compliant.
And our full-time residents.
Yeah, so just to elaborate a little bit, so about a year ago in April, we had finished this site, site plan and we submitted to the Conservation Commission and we received the order of conditions. Jim and Colleen did their own zoning board application. The plan that we have shows the, well, this plan, I have, I have an existing conditions plan as well. So this is a 1,650 square foot footprint home that needs to be elevated. It's all in the velocity zone. And so these are the architectural plans that were submitted. And so it looks like a standard two-story home with a garage under, but it's, it's breakaway walls and breakaway panels and it's in a velocity zone 18 and the lowest horizontal member will be at 20 and, but it doesn't exceed the height restriction. The, I just wanna show you the existing conditions, which we have. So the existing home is a, is a smaller two-bedroom cottage. We're holding the distance from the covered landing to Warrell Ave. We don't violate the rear setback or the side setback, I don't violate, but we're compliant with the other setbacks except for the setback along Warrell Ave. And so when you do this full tear-down, rebuild and you have to provide the flood zone compliant foundation and it's going to be their year-round home and not a summer cottage, then there's a need and a desire and with no detriment to the neighborhood to increase from, you know, from that footprint, if you will, to this, which is, so it's 33 by 50. It's 1,650 square feet. The combined total area of the lot is 8,000 square feet.
Okay. Do you have a two-by-three site plan for us?
This is a two-by-three site plan.
He wants one, he wants for the, for the. Here we go.
Are you neighbors with the Turner, you're back-to-back or something?
They live down the street. We're on, we're on a corner lot.
Where is this in the world?
Next to the Turner one, we just.
Down the street.
It's the same place where the cop throws you out when you try to go on to Hamilton Beach.
Hamilton Beach.
But I'll let you in.
Yeah, I got you.
And that's Turner, where we were.
You're on, you're on the, you're on the classy side of the guard gate, too.
Right, right.
You have to sign in to go out there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Good question. If I may ask the commissioner, how 1356 plays in?
Excuse me?
What, Section 1356, why, how does it play in this matter?
What?
As it, as it reads.
It just needs a variance?
No.
If we decide it's not substantial.
Right, right. If it's a special permit. Yeah. 1355, special permit, tear down the house, but if you find it's more detrimental, then it'd have to be a variance. That's the only reason I quoted that.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. All right, we'll start by Troy. What do you think?
I don't have any problem.
Okay, do you feel it's so detrimental, should be a special permit or a variance? Do you feel it's so substantially detrimental?
I think it would be a special permit.
Right, because they forced to alleviate it. Veronica?
I agree. I think it's not more detrimental, special permit.
Jimmy?
I'm good with every, I'm, I'll be, I'll try to be quiet for a change.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Good with it. All right. In the public, anyone want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? Yes, sir. Wanna sit down, state your name and address, what you, what are you against?
Jim Reardon at 21 Warrell.
He's not against. Mr. Chairman, he's in favor.
I'm in favor.
Are you in favor? Okay.
I'm just saying, I live right across the street and, you know.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
We're in favor of it.
And you're in favor. Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor?
Lady over there.
Favor, okay.
Everybody.
Thank you. You don't have to come up.
Let the record show, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 hands were up in favor.
Okay. Do you want to add anything?
No, sir.
You're good. Okay, with that being said, can we move to close?
So I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second today.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, now we move to, you guys believe, you already stated your mind, it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so it's 1355, so it's a special permit. On the special permit, you guys can make a motion.
You want to, you want to vote the special permit or we just agree that it's gonna be a special permit?
We'll agree on 1355.
Okay. It's gonna be a special permit. I make a motion that we grant a special permit with standard conditions based on the plan submitted.
And the finding not substantial, that's not.
Not substantial, because it's, yep.
And who's the, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't it worth sitting here all night? As long as you get a yes, it's worth it, right?
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Congratulations.
We need green cards for that? Do we need green cards for that?
We can check them if you want.
Oh, I just, I think maybe, well, we need to get into a flow, like, when are we collecting that, or what are they being, the last two?
The flow, I thought we, on that line, in, in public meeting, I thought when we discussed the rules and regulations, it was said that the applicant would be responsible, but it didn't say that we had to verify it.
You have to.
We have to, okay, okay.
If we're doing.
Now, that's, that's why I changed the. No, that's, that's why I changed the meeting. That's why I changed the minutes.
There's going to be problems.
We don't improve them, we upprove them. That's right.
Dump it to Sonia, if you want.
I mean, it is, like Rick said, it's distracting from trying to pay attention.
It does kill the flow.
Yeah, and does somebody come in early and do it, like, or is the applicant still here?
Can I just say something?
More work for Sonia.
Hello?
But it will be less work, because she's not sending them out.
Excuse me? Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can you put them louder?
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
So, I noticed when I go through Jillian's packet, as I do, I look through everything and pretty much go by every job. I noticed that they're already in there. Is that something that we look at during the week and check off so we don't go over, or does it need to be on record as us checking all this off? Because again, that's why I brought this up. We are a volunteer board. Somebody that was getting paid got fired because of this. That's why I'm concerned that, why I didn't want to have it on our end. So, I think if we can somehow have it done before the meeting goes, so we know it's all done, it would be good, because it is definitely distracting, and it's not very professional-looking the way we do it. So, I know that it's the first time, and I know we've got to clean it up, but from a person sitting on the outside, it doesn't make a meeting look very clean.
So, I just want to clarify, if we're doing this outside of the meetings, I am not doing it, because I have a hard enough time getting here for two hours.
Well, I think what Richard's suggesting is that maybe we ask Sonia to check it, but she's a pretty busy gal, too. We are going to replace Ken with two bodies. I didn't, I didn't ask for Sonia. It's just that, as we're going through, I mean, everything is supplied for us online. You look at the projects, and when they come up, I believe that they're photocopying them and putting them on there. Oh, they're in the back of the folder. They're here. There's no question about it. But they're also on the website, I believe. You're right. So, again, I mean, I know we have a hard time, but it also takes time to go look at these jobs, looks at, look at these petitioners, go, go by it. I mean, that's all a part of our job, whether we have it or not. We've added these green cards due to some changes in the town. But we've, we as a board have been going by doing what we were supposed to do. But two hours, I got more than the, I got more than the meeting logged in so far since I've been on this board, going by jobs, talking with the homeowners, seeing what the project's about. I mean, I stepped in full-hearted, and I'm still full-hearted with this position.
Is that you volunteering to check these off?
Say, oh, I only got enough time for the meeting, but yet we turn around, and then we're going to continue and then go look at it, I think is counterproductive.
I think we're getting away from the subject. Are you volunteering to do these cards?
Nope. I, I, I stated in the beginning, the first time, I don't want to have anything to do with it if I don't have to. And if, and I'm going to stand that way, because I think, again, we, as a board, we're supposed to go all, look at things, and now we're checking off these pieces of paper, and we're kind of look, in a way, we look ridiculous, because we're not exactly sure, you know, is this a realty trust? How many are here? I mean, I just wish there was a way that we could either clean it up or get it taken care of before it gets to the meeting, that's all. Or, again, Jim did say that it was supposed to be their responsibility shipped, way back when, it was supposed to be shifted to their responsibility, and then all of a sudden, it's the zoning board of appeals ability, I mean, responsibility.
All right. We'll, we'll ask Sonia, I guess, Jim saying that Ken's getting replaced with two people, so maybe they could do it before it comes to us. How's that?
It's just, it's just that, you know, some of us, we're all busy. We're all professional. We're all busy. We all have careers. We all try to do family things and whatnot. The zoning board of appeals is a beautiful board. I appreciate going on this and doing what we're doing for the town. But this green card thing, I mean, I don't care about other towns. We're not other towns. And that's one thing that bothers me when I hear people say, well, other towns do it. Well, I'll tell you what, it's not Wareham. And Wareham has a right to stand up for itself and not be like every other town, especially the way things go nowadays. So, I'm, I'm sorry. It's just, it's all making me nervous that something's going to fall back on us, because, oh, we didn't say the right guy's name, or he didn't get the card, or something. I don't know. Again, there was consequences paid on a guy that didn't do it right, so I'm worried. We can talk about it.
All right. We'll, we'll definitely check with Sonia. I'll talk to Ken tomorrow and Sonia, and it makes sense. We'll have him do it, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Well, I mean, we just need a discussion. It's something new. Again, I, I know that anytime you start something, there's a learning curve. I'm just nervous that we make, why should it be to our point, we have enough to do on our job as far as approving, educating ourselves on things, and then this green thing come, the little cards come in, and we're not sure what we're doing. Again, it's a learning curve, but I just, I'm nervous on how this is going.
Okay. We'll have an answer. I'll make sure we have an answer by next week, by next meeting. All right. What's that thing? And Ken, are you there? Is Ken there?
No, Ken left a while ago. Ken left. Yeah, he's, he's been off of this probably halfway through the meeting. So.
What's that, Settlers Glen thing?
So, Settlers Glen.
But they're not on the agenda.
They're not, they're not on the agenda. They asked us to squeak them into the agenda. The reason they want to be squeaked into the agenda, and I, I don't know if we're breaking any rules discussing it, but I don't think we are, because we're in an open meeting. But they were asked to be on tonight's agenda. It was posed to us as if they were supposed to be on, and they got left off. But the email went out asking us to sneak them in, and you had put a response, and it came to all, and it said, no way. Now, if you didn't do that, somebody, that was regarding this.
Right. Okay, so that need to be on the agenda.
They need, they need to be on, so your, your feeling was, you didn't want to do it without it being in the printed agenda.
Right.
You had no way. You didn't have anything to do with how you felt about.
Right.
Grant or not grant, so it wasn't discussed improperly online. It was, you didn't want to, so if it's not on tonight's agenda, we probably shouldn't discuss it.
Right.
Can I ask something? I didn't get an email about any of that. But it came from Ken, and it was asked. It didn't, I, I've been through scorch through all my emails. I didn't see anything like that. Yeah, it.
We'll make sure it's on the agenda next time.
Okay.
All right. That's it.
Yeah, we shouldn't discuss it, I guess.
All right. Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute.
So moved.
Everybody got an email from me forwarded from the Selectman's secretary. They've got, they revised the code of conduct, and they want us all to respond to the email that we received, a copy of it. I forwarded it to everybody. I believe, or I'm led to believe, that there was an existing code of conduct, and they simply revised it. If I had any questions about it, my question would be, it's February 14, and this says that this is effective September 12, 2023. So, I don't, I don't see any stamps of it being put into the official record in the clerk's office. So, I don't understand how on February 14, we're getting instructed to acknowledge receipt of a change in policies, a rewrite of policies that's retroactive several months, that is signed by members of the Selectman. They don't reference what meeting they voted on it and when it was discussed. But simply, simply, all they're asking us to do is say, yes, I received it. They're not asking us to say, I agree or disagree. Just acknowledge receipt.
Okay. Everybody goes online. Go online and acknowledge it.
Veronica already did. I did.
I did. I didn't CC you, but I.
I didn't, you didn't need to CC me.
Well, I just wanted you to know I got it, so I CC'd you, but she doesn't get it.
Yeah, you were, you got it. You should have it. You should have an email that, from me forwarded from, I'll tell you who it was.
Can you resend it to us?
Yeah, I can resend it. Yeah, I can. I can do it right from here, right now. You want me to close the meet, you want to close the meeting?
Yeah, let's close.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Good night. Thank you, Richard.